Well, I see that everyone is seated even though the ten minutes are not up. Let's just resume. I see that Ms. Carmen Khan has questions. So would Mr. Z let her ask her questions first? Yes, please go ahead. Thank you. Well, to to the system that Mr. Long was asking about. Well, he said that you are requesting that be launched as soon as possible. When we asked Operator A, Operator A received nine billion to la- launch a new system. My question is, would these would these apps actually be separate between Operator A and B? What would the contents be for both apps? The the TD set out guidelines on what functions should be included to ensure that it will be user-friendly to the users. TD, Mr. Chu, thank you. Operator A serves um SRS and also DAR. And Operator D offers video service only. So each operator will use its own system. Operator B is more focused on it being a mobile app. But for Operator A, um there's a larger system that uh you would feed in requests and that it be used in a larger system. As they provide different services, we don't see any commonalities. But at the moment, when we're following up with the operators, we are trying to um iron out the details. The TD would need to approve the the functions provided on the apps to ensure that it would be suitable to the users and be user-friendly. Ms. Khan. The users do not know which operator is serving them. They didn't don't know uh that the government has purchased such services. I suggest that the transport department in coordinating and monitoring the supplier for the uh technology actually be more user-oriented. Ms. Lee, well, we do collect feedback from the users and we would relay this back to the um operators. Ms. Khan. Would you actually consider the routes uh with suggestions from the hospital authority based on the clusters? Well, compared to Tsuen Moon Hospital, Pockor Hospital and Hong Kong Children's Hospital route, would you actually review the route arrangement? Because I see that uh there are no that uh there is no route offered for certain hospitals. Are you talking about table fourteen? Yes. This already is all the routing for all the clusters. Well, we just started up a new route. Therefore, we now provide fourteen routes instead of thirteen. For those with low patronage, we are going to optimize it this June or July. And for other routes, we are going to review it together with the operator. We would monitor the patronage for each route. We would also ask for feedback for users. We also have colleagues in charge of coordinating with the hospital clusters. You ask operators work with the clusters and to try to ask for data on users as long as it doesn't reach the privacy ordinance. And we try our best to get feedback from the users as well. Ms. Khan. The TD should request the hospital clusters to advertise the services of these feeder services. Because for Pockor Hospital and Tsuen Moon Hospital, they do not share information on the feeder service. Your Hong Kong Children's Hospital actually advertise such service. It's not consistent, so I remind the administration to do more advertising in such a service. Uh, thank you for your comment. We have been asking the hospitals to do that. We have also set up booths in some of the Kowloon hospitals. We would also uh try to enhance that in other hospitals. Ms. Khan. As Mr. Long said, a few of us have pointed out that we don't want to see it it look good on paper. We do hope that real action is taken. You should really execute it to make sure that you were really doing it. This will only this can show the accountability of the administration. Now I'll like to ask a question to the Audit Commission. When you're working on this report, have you looked at the MOU and checked whether they have done everything in accordance with the MOU? Commissioner. Yes, we did. In four point ten and four point eleven, these are actually results of our comparison with the MOU. So these are the discrepancies found. For those that are in accordance with the MOU, we usually wouldn't put it down on the report. It's only with discrepancies that we highlighted in the report. Ms. Khan, thank you. We must be clear on that. I hope that the FSTB would also pay attention to fifteen point one to decide on the um MOU on the administrative measures uh when subsidies are approved. There must be continuous monitoring. I'd like to ask that when this is written in the FSTB, does do they really look into whether everything is done in accordance with such arrangement? Oh, these are just general guidelines. According to the public administration ordinance uh ordinance, then there must for support and subsidies given to subvented organizations, um responsibility must be taken. And for subvented organizations, as there are different categories, we try our best to provide guidelines in in the financial circular and based on the individual situation. Then uh the then management will be taken in accordance with the needs of each subvented organization. Ms. Khan. So the so the management will be taken. So on the uh financial circular report, so as a matter of good management, directors of bureau of or the relevant controlling officers should preferably enter into a memorandum of administrative arrangements or a similar instrument with each organization receiving recurrent funding from the government under their purview. I'd like to once again reiterate that the controlling officers, well, today's controlling officer um of TD are here today. You must really make sure which arrangements are best for these subvented organizations to ease the mind of the public and also the minds of the PAC members. We have identified many problems in this report. So this is what I want to point out that the um that we should do within accordance with the financial circular. So after the circular is out, the controlling officers would be responsible uh for its management. And then they would be in charge of also the funding. We don't want to take the risk of wasting resources. We wa- wasting resources and and mismanagement of systems should also be considered.
Do you need a response from the administration? Yes, perhaps they can provide a response on what lessons they have learned. I will also invite the administration, especially the controlling officers, to talk about their observations. Commissioner for Transport. Thank you, Ms. Carmen Khan, for your comments. Your feedback is very important to our review. And we also pledged earlier we will conduct our model of supervision in response to members' concerns. Let me also say this for disabled persons. We do understand that their needs will be different from the general public. So we do take that into consideration in our management of their transport services compared to public transport services. But of course, we'll make sure public funds are used efficiently. And we will do better in this in future. Ms. Carmen Khan, thank you.
Deputy Chairman, I have two to three sets of questions. Let me first ask some questions to clarify some facts regarding Appendix D, the recreational routes. It is said that the routes provided would only operate with bookings. I also want to ask about Appendix C. There are different numbers of daily trips for the hospital routes. Will these require bookings? Mr. Curtis Chu, these hospital routes are fixed routes. So unlike recreational routes, bookings would be required. I also want to ask about page fifty-one of the report regarding fares on point two for DAR. It is said that for one point, one to four people, thirty minutes would be twelve dollars. Is it a per-person fare? No, it is for the vehicle. So that would take into consideration the number of people. It is said that thirty minutes or after, it works kind of like taxi fare. And the booking fee would be five dollars. So the fare would be different on each occasion, correct? Mr. Curtis Chu, correct. Having cleared up these facts, I now want to shift my focus to the cost-effectiveness of the service. I want to talk about several tables. Let me first say this. We have talked a lot about Operator B's performance is not up to par and there is oversight on the part of the transport department in regulating their performance. Since the resumption of normal travel, we have a tight supply of coaches. We have an over-demand. Is this a correct statement of the situation at the moment? Commissioner for Transport. Since the resumption of normal travel, we saw a manpower shortage of drivers for coaches, which is why we have the labor importation scheme for the transport sector to include coach drivers to address the manpower shortage. Thank you. Deputy Chairman.
Thank you. It is said that Operator B has expressed interest and thus Operator B was engaged to provide such services. Look, I'm not giving a statement here, but my understanding is that if Operator B is also operating commercial services, they would have an excess demand of their services. They would not need public money. Is it because they are making a generous profit at the moment that they do not want to operate the public service and would just rather leave the vehicles idle? For certain suppliers that would provide free food. For example, they would operate commercial operations. They would not be as eager to operate public services and they may not be clear in their accounts. So with the rehab bus services, is it the case that they are doing the same? And perhaps there may be misappropriation of resources to operate their self-financing activities? Mr. Curtis Chu, it is stipulated in the MOU that is very clear. The subvented funds can only be used to operate subvented services, not self-financing services. And I believe the operator is doing that. And we have performed more random checks to make sure that is the case. And we also looked at the details such as the deployment of drivers to make sure this is in compliance, to make sure the subvented activities are funded by subvented funds. And the subvented funds would only be used in such activities, not self-financing activities. We want to make sure there is an efficient use of resources so that there won't be any vehicles idle for them to operate self-financing activities in the first place. Thank you, Deputy Chairman. Let me say this again. We have to take a soft approach because disabled persons have very special needs. And we need to make sure the service can meet their needs. And I'm not saying the administration is doing so poorly. I just want to make sure we are doing what we are supposed to do. I also want to talk about some figures. For example, table fourteen. We could see that the total passenger trips overall would be fifty-seven thousand six hundred and forty. Now for Appendix seven, excuse me, uh it let's first look at table fifteen. We can see the analysis of patronage for recreational routes in twenty twenty-three. The total passenger trips overall is one four five five. So we add them together and have it divided by the amount of subvention. If I'm correct, the figure reached for total passenger trips. For each passenger trip, it would be two hundred and three dollars. Of course, we will only charge two dollars per person. I understand that. Let's now look at table four. On page twenty-three of the Chinese version, that's the average passenger trips per SRS route. In twenty twenty-three, the average monthly number of SRS users was one thousand two hundred and eighty-three out of the seven thousand odd customers that are registered. The target total passenger trips would be forty, excuse me, four hundred and thirty-one thousand three hundred. Please correct me if I'm wrong. But for Operator A, for SRS and DAR, do you have a breakdown? If not, we can only take the total figure as Operator A's total figure. And now let's look at table seven. Number of passing trips, passenger trips for DAR in twenty twenty-three. The actual total passenger trips amount to four hundred and forty-two thousand zero eighty-four. Now, I think the Audit Commission may have more accurate figures, but by my crude calculations, for the service, it would cost one hundred and forty point nine seven. For Operator B, the transport department would have to deploy more resources to regulate the performance. But for Operator A, it is actually more efficient, so to speak. I remember back then, Jockey Club would issue vouchers for those in need. But there was feedback, the operator thought it inconvenient. In fact, the users found it inconvenient as well. So that's what happened in the past. But according to the transport department, disabled persons would make use of taxis. They would also go to online operators. I won't mention the specific names. But if one books a vehicle, in general, it will only cost three hundred odd dollars to get from Tsuen Moon to from Yulong to Tai Hau Wen. It would cost three hundred forty to three hundred and eighty dollars. It's just what I got in the estimates of the application. We now have very different circumstances. I think we should perhaps have a more prudent assessment of the demand for such services. I do understand that Operator A has been operating the service for forty odd years. But with the changes brought about by the developments over time, is it time for Operator A to retire? So that we can save costs to provide services that would match the needs of users through providing such services with a more flexible approach? We may not have an answer today, but I think the value-for-money audit is exactly telling us this point. I want to ask if the Secretary or the Commissioner for Transport will have any response for me. Thank you. Secretary.
As said by the Deputy Chairman, and I have already provided answers to the questions of the Deputy Chairman. Let me say this again. For disabled persons, there is a need for such services. We do note the Audit Commission's recommendations and we agree there is room for improvement for such services. But rehab bus services are specifically catered to the needs of disabled persons. We will, of course, conduct a review, but I think our priority would be to implement the recommendations of the Audit Commission first. And then we'll review that with the changes in circumstances, the development of technologies, development over time, to see if we can enhance such services. When we criticize measures, we should take this approach. We want to look for any room for improvement. We may think that there are better options, but we should be prudent because what is on our mind may not be what happens in reality. Different disabled persons would have different needs. If there are drastic changes with rehab bus services for the disabled persons that are currently making use of rehab bus services, it may be too much of an impact on them. Of course, we will try to introduce other options, but we may not be able to identify the potential issues involved. Right now, rehab bus services are specifically catered to disabled persons. If disabled persons have only public transport services to make use of, there may be other issues. I do thank the Deputy Chairman for providing very good suggestions, but I think the premise should not be that we should be rid of rehab bus services. There is a purpose to rehab bus services. We need to provide transport services to disabled persons. And such operations, from day one, we know that will be costly. But for these disabled persons, we believe we need to facilitate their mobility as well. I do thank the Public Accounts Committee for making valuable time to scrutinize scrutinize the relevant issues. And we will aim to implement the Audit Commission's recommendations as soon as possible, and we will review if there are other alternatives in due course. Commissioner for Transport. We do thank the feedback given by the Audit Commission. We do agree that we should step up supervision of the operators. Through the three public hearings, we believe what we said have facilitated public understanding of the needs of disabled persons with such transport services. These disabled persons have very specific needs, and they are very much different from the needs of the general public. We may know that there is school bus service, and one may compare it to rehab bus services, but in fact, students would only go to schools for rehab bus services. There are different destinations, there is different routing, there are different times for the buses' operations, and it is not easy for the operators to operate the services. We do agree there is more flexibility that should be afforded to operators, but we do note that we should ensure the operators are making good use of the resources allocated to them.
I thank the two officials for their response. Let let's take a look at table fifteen. Uh Mister Louis Lung, and I another member has spoken on this. Lantau Island has more passenger trips, nine hundred and six, and divided by one hundred and seventy-five trips is a five point eight per trip. For temporary routes, three hundred and fifty-three passenger trips divided by forty-eight forty-eight vehicle trips is seven point five seven point three five, the highest among these routes. So if the more flexible, the more efficient you are. So we'd have to relax from the passenger's point of view. And for temporary routes, which required T D's approval, which I think is not right fa- very flexible. If you relax um the requirements so that there are more passengers, and if the routes are offered in a more flexible manner, you have more passengers. It's better than uh fixed routes with few passengers. You have said two or three times, let's complete the task on hand first. Yes, it should be the approach for any official responsible for this. But you should consider whether there are more effective solutions. We should be target oriented. We should adopt the user's perspective. Instead of you doing what you already have. If you go, I want to go to Australia, you don't go north or or go west, you go south. Uh you will not say that I will do a better job in planning for a journey to the north, even though I want to go to Australia. If you develop an app, you need to spend time to develop. But you can use a off-the-show uh appointment app. It well, it would be much mu- much more the time efficient. And some of the functions such as uh the ratio of uh zero passenger trips uh are not really useful. You should look at the current day circumstances in Hong Kong and whether uh we need an app with a backward function. So if you want to go to Australia, you should plan a proper route instead of going north. Because uh currently you are you are going north. Uh once once again, I'd like to thank the Chairman for leading us into this discussion, and we have offer a lot of comments. I hope the secretary and the and the commissioner wouldn't mind our saying sold. We'd like to get more data. We'd like to see that the the system is more pe- properly monitored and that the users and the passengers uh gets better services. Any other questions? Anything from the O- Audit Commission of Audit? No? Any supplement from the secretary? Once again, I'd like to thank the Deputy Secretary and the Chairman on the P A C for offering so much valuable advice. Our purpose, as we have said, is to serve the the disabled who are in need. That's the first priority. We want to make sure that the two operators are doing their jobs properly. So you should consider whether this the whole system is there for Operator A or Operator B or the the general public or those in need. We we have to make sure that our resources are expanded properly, and I think the public will be satisfied, whatever you come up with. Uh once again, I thank everyone who is in attendance and all the members. Thank you.